Have all of the Oldfield neighborhood in one council district. So we took care of that in Plan 1D. And then we also looked at ways to move councilmen Albritton into District, back into Districts Three. Where if you look at that compared to District, to the Plan 1B, he had moved into District Two. And so you have a zoomed in detail of District One, so you can see the street boundaries that are there. And I will point out on that zoom in on District One, the area between Sanon Parkway, I mean Sanon Millard and Perry Parkway, if that were to develop and become inside the city limits, right now it's white because it's not inside the city limits. The way that District, those census blocks are drawn, they would become, that would become part of District One. So it creates this buffer where Perry Parkway is that boundary for District One, just if ever that section, that portion of the unincorporated Houston County were to ever come into the city limits of Perry. And then if you look, so the way that we accomplished the balance of, between the districts, was the large area that's in the east area, service area, we actually identified that there were multiple blocks, census blocks, in that area that we were able to divide into District Two and District Three. And you have the street view, which gives you a little bit of sense as to where those lines are. You know, we're locked in by the geography of the blocks, and this was really the only configuration that we could come up with in this area, given the concentration of population that's there, to logically divide that area into two different districts, which is what we needed to do in order to accomplish the goal of moving two incumbents to each district. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about either Plan 1B or 1D.
Council question about the proposed District 3 district.
I have one question right now. This map is on, I guess this map here?
Yes.
Two and three. Is my understanding correct that with Hawkes Ness Drive, that I guess looking at it from this view, the left-hand side of the street would remain in District Two, whereas the right-hand side would be District Three, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What you don't want to do, so if you and I, if you and the mayor are next-door neighbors, if you share our fence line.
Right.
We don't want to put you in different districts, but if you and I live across the street from each other, that's okay. Because that street is the natural divider that is logical to the voter of, but next-door neighbors, across-the-fence neighbors, is not useful.
And I see going to 41 that we still have a, we still have a left side and property has the right, the right, going of 41.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you for saying left and right, not east and west, because that's sometimes directionally damaged.
More questions do you have?
I would only say that Ms. Mathis and her staff have done an outstanding job of taking our recommendations and our suggestions, and I guess our pleas as well, to come up with something that meets all of the state and federal requirements, but also meets many of the desires that we have as council. So my compliments to you and your staff for taking that and turning it counterclockwise and saying, okay, we can make this work.
Thank you very much.
We truly appreciate your patience and your diligence on that.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you. So what do you need from us as far as an approval process to move forward to 1B?
So because you are maintaining your structure of three districts, this would proceed as a charter amendment. So we would work with Ms. Newby on coming up with, giving you all of the reference numbers for blocks, census tracts blocks, tracts blocks and block groups, to give you the heart, the legal description of the district. And then they'll go through your charter amendment process with the appropriate map of whichever plan you so direct.
Well, do you need a vote from this council tomorrow night to do that?
I think we would like your approval on the District, actually on the Plan 1D map. If that is what you want us to move forward, prepare the charter amendment for.
That's what I understand from this council, that's what they were looking for. And so I think everybody's in concurrence that what's been presented in 1D meets our needs going forward for the next 10 years. And so I haven't heard anything that's different than that, so. So we need to vote on that tomorrow night, we can add it as an agenda item.
I think as long as we have your concurrence, and we know this is the map for the board book, and we can prepare the charter amendment, because we'll have, we'll do it as a ordinance with two readings as well.
So councilmembers, Ms. Newby has indicated that we need to show our concurrence with this 1D map as presented. Do we have your concurrence to move forward with developing the ordinance for this being our new, our new district map?
Yes.
Yes.
We have concurrence. Would you please move forward?
Thank you very much.
We thank you very much.
Absolutely, and you are quite capable to answer, because Ms. Newby will get her the technical legal description of all the references for blocks and groups that we're here.
Do you want one question? After we have the second reading and we have the vote, at what point past that does that, do the district lines actually change and go into effect?
So your ordinance, your charter amendment would contain an effective date?
Okay.
And that typically could be the next election, when the next election would occur?
But if there were to be any situation where, and I think the legislation said ordinance can be drafted in a way that it specifies, if a special election is required prior to that effective date, then it would become effective. Because the statute that requires us to redistrict says that it's supposed to be effective for the next general election or special election. So if there were to be any type of vacancy that would be required, whether that's by resignation, or someone were to move out of their district, or move out of the city, then I believe that it would be effective at that point, when you have a special election.
So we're basically talking about a year from now. Well, and whenever the November election, nothing happens as far as a special election, does it?
Yes.
Okay. And they will continue to serve their current constituents until that time?
Yes.
Okay. Just a little more comments here.
I just recommend that you have an effectiveness, whatever that day is, if you have the second reading, and then you're done with it.
Can we make it effective that day? Okay. I think that would be the, what's a council will be able to, go again, make the change. If you could do that effective for the second reading, then it will be effective that day. Okay? Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you very much. I am bringing this community development department, 3B1, to housing success presentation, Ms. Morton.
Thank you.
Can I add your name?
Yes. So, if you recall that last month, Perry, who said the Department of Community Affairs, I think, chaired a board meeting, and the Assistant City Manager had a moment to present some of the successes that we've had with their programs, particularly the CDVG and CHIP. So we wanted to take an opportunity to show the council this day presentation. So just going to walk through it with you guys. So up on the big screen, back here, if you have trouble seeing anything, just let me know, if you try to zoom in. So getting started, this first slide here just identifies the target neighborhoods that have been identified in Perry as needing some housing improvements. Those are Sand Hill, Creekwood, New Hope, Five Points, and Oldfield. And there are also two properties on here, Berkshire Court and Oliver Place Apartments, which have been low-income housing tax credit projects in Perry. So these are, these neighborhoods were identified in a housing assessment in 2016. So this assessment identified distressed and failing homes, which helped the city identify which neighborhoods to go forward with applying for grants in. So you can see high concentrations of distressed and failing homes in Sand Hill, which is where our project started, and then Creekwood and Oldfield and New Hope as well. So the concentration of these properties are consistent with the neighborhood outlines. So looking at the grants from year to year, in 2016, we were awarded a CDVG and a CHIP grant for the Sand Hill neighborhood. So I'll zoom in here so you can see exactly the properties that were targeted and applied for the programs and were successful. It's, 2016 are these dark purple and red properties. And here's an example of one of those. 600 Marsha Drive, this was a CHIP project. So you can kind of see a before picture in the little black box there, and then an after photo bigger behind it. So this property got a little addition over to the left side of it, new windows and other This is one of the CDVG projects from 2016. 725 Elaine Street was a complete reconstruction of that property. In 2017, we were awarded just a CDVG grant, also for the Sand Hill neighborhood. This one included some demolition of light structures, as well as some rehabilitation and reconstruction. So we'll zoom back in and look at those. These are the blue ones, the dark wood colors, on Genie Street, Edward Street, Betty and Bill Streets. So this is 518 Edward Street. It was a CDVG project, so you can see some significant remodeling that was done there, new vinyl siding, new windows, new porch there as well. Here's an example of a CDVG demolition project, where 919 Genie Street was demolished, and now there's a nice clean lot there. 2019 was a big year, there was a CDVG and a CHIP grant. This was for work in Sand Hill and Creekwood. This is 413 Gordy Street. It got new vinyl siding, new roof, other new fixtures there. It was a CHIP project. This is 409 Stanley Street, which is a duplex. It was a CDVG project, recently just got completed. This grant also included different types of improvements, which was also street repaving and stormwater improvements. So this is some fresh pavement out there in the Creekwood neighborhood, and some fresh stormwater infrastructure. And then before pictures, you can see some flooding issues and rain deterioration that was happening out there. 2020, there were awards for CDVG and CHIP grants as well. This was for the Creekwood neighborhood. This is 1016 Winchester Circle, which was a CDVG project. Got a new roof and some new windows. So also with this presentation, we wanted to highlight some success stories that Perry has that really have stood out to us. The first one is 525 Bill Street. It was a 2017 CDVG project. So in the process of this grant, this house actually burned. And then the community development department was able to work with the property owners to get this rebuilt, and now a family member is able to live there. It's just really nice. Number two, you may know Ms. Darian Wolfhook. This is her home on 926 Genie Street. She was a 2017 CDVG grant recipient. She got a lot of interior work, new roof, and she wanted everyone to know that she loves her house, and we've done good work. Success story three is the Oliver Place Apartments. It was a 2016 low-income housing tax credit program. This was part of our work with the GIC team, was able to help get those projects here. And then success story number four is another one of these projects. And then, I guess earlier this year, maybe like last year, Berkshire Court, it was a 2018 low-income housing tax credit project. This is located in Oakmont Road. So looking forward to the next year, the next round of grants, our next target neighborhood is Oldfield, so we're hoping to apply for more CDVG and CHIP grants in the Oldfield neighborhood. So this presentation also gave a glimpse of some of the housing that is an issue in that neighborhood. So be working with the residents in that community to improve those housing conditions. And then this is a little bit of summary data that shows how many people were impacted. 361 have been impacted by CDVG and CHIP grants. 63 homes have been rehacked, seven properties demolished, and four homes demolished and reconstructed. So a total, we've got over $4 million worth of projects through these DCA programs. And then wanted to just let everyone know that we worked with our GIS consultants from ESG Engineering to develop this presentation using their store map software. So they helped us a lot put this together. And I'm glad to take any questions, also Robert.
Councilmember, question with your comments.
Looks good.
And if anyone would like to, I'd be willing to.
So no work has been done in Oldfield yet, it's not great.
Because of the census tracts, we were not able to apply there over the last four years. But because of the changes we requested in the census, the tracts are, as I understand it, I hope we got applied.
Yes.
Fairly close to being, that we can apply for there. And it's somewhere we need to overlook for the next couple of years, it's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in there, so.
Some of the, the other, before we just, better remember what Oldfield looks like today, so I just really hope they get a lot of money.
It's one of those areas we've been extremely conscious of, because of the regulations, we have not been able to do as much work in there as we, I know Data Higgs has done a lot of work in there, cleaning up a lot of stuff, but as far as us going in and spending a grant money, we haven't been able to do that yet. I hope that we're successful with DCA, next year's application, we'll be applying for that. But I mean, I think everybody has to go back and think about the work Mr. Keen has done, and Mr. Wood, and Chief Lynn, relative to the GIC team, and all, everybody that's on the GIC team. This started 10 years ago, I think it was from Roberts, it started, was it 10 years ago? How long ago? I know Mary Betts started the whole concept, and so.
And it started in 2014.
Yeah, so, where it's seven years ago started this whole process, and it's been a lot of hard work with people bringing this to fruition and the success that we've had with the grants and the work that we've done. So I compliment each and every one of you. I hope I haven't overlooked anybody that works on that team, or that, that you guys have done outstanding job, and we really appreciate the hard work. It's really improved the quality of life for a number of those people in those communities. Questions? Thank you, Ms. Morton.
Well, I have to come back.
Okay. Microphone.
Holly, can you share with the group, when we're leaving to go to Texas, and what that has to do kind of sort of what we're doing?
Sure. So back, I guess, earlier in the summer, we were selected to attend the vacant property leadership institute, which is a training opportunity in Austin, Texas, on February 8th through the 11th. So hopefully from that program, we'll be able to learn new strategies or ideas, or best practices from other communities around the nation regarding ways to help dilapidate and create properties.
But as I understand it, you, the city of Perry, was only one of three cities considered in the state of Georgia to participate?
That's right. So city of Perry will be one of three Georgia city representatives. It's also the city of College Park and South Fulton that will represent Georgia, and then there's three other states that will be attending, and that's Kentucky, Wisconsin, and Illinois.
But it was really competitive, as I understand it, to be selected in that, so my compliments to you guys being selected. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for you to travel and see different things and understand, so I think it'll, you will bring back a wealth of knowledge.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Morton. Item 3V2 is a discussion of the draft updates to the comprehensive plan and character area maps. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand out some. Please hand out some, I'm sorry.
Amy, do you have any?
So we have a couple of slides here, but it gives sort of an overview of what we're going to discuss, but I'm going to kind of skip over those and get right into what changes and updates have been done to the comprehensive plan. I will say that we've worked with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission, they've done vocal work on putting this plan together. We met with them, Holly and I, met with them back in, I think, February of this year to start putting together a plan of how to move forward with this update in order to get as much feedback from the citizenry as we could, and also to make this a plan that works well for the city of Perry. As you know, the plan is a joint plan with Houston County and the other two cities in the, in the county. And so the regional commission had to work with all three, all four of those entities. They developed some questionnaires that went out to the community. They were specific to the areas where people live. And I want to give some kudos to Tabitha Clark for promoting this survey on our media platforms. I wanted to point out that out of the responses to the surveys, Perry had 686 responses to the general survey. And we also included some hard copy handouts that went out, so it wasn't just through social media, but paper copies as well. Based on those 686 responses, there were three subject-specific follow-up questionnaires that went out, where we received 54 additional responses. Houston County had 410. Warner Robbins had 274 responses, and Centerville had 100. So I think we did a really good job of getting the word out to our citizens that this plan was being updated, and getting them involved in, in what they want to see in the plan, and what the future of Perry and Houston County in general is going to be. So with that, there were also some stakeholder meetings that were developed that we handled throughout the early process, and a lot of this report or project takes into consideration the comments that were received in those surveys, and the comments that were received in these stakeholder meetings. So I'm going to get started. We've got a slide that, or slides that we're going to show you, but I wanted to start at the beginning of what we've given you, and just highlight some things. I don't want to get into a whole lot of specifics or whatever, unless you have questions about anything. Where I think we wanted to spend more time is with our character areas in the map, and how that relates to Perry. But I did want to highlight some changes that were made to the plan. So on page seven, this is under the economic development element of the plan. Under the, I believe the goals that were there are pretty much the same as they have been. There were some modifications under needs and opportunities. The first one, addressing the opportunity to become a software center of excellence and to create an innovation corridor is something new. And so that's been added. And number two, looking at industrial development and speculative buildings in relation to where public infrastructure exists, or we have the capacity to support those developments. Those are new elements, or new or modified needs in the community. And number six, on page eight, is a new revision relating to enhancing shopping, dining, and residential opportunities in downtown Perry. And so that opportunity is completely new. In housing, the goals are essentially the same as they have been in the current plan. We did make modifications, recommend modifications in the needs and opportunities. Number one, shifting household size and family time priorities require various housing options, and we kind of discussed what that means. Number two and three are similar, but have been slightly modified or combined with other needs and opportunities from the previous plan. On page 11, under natural and cultural resources, under goals, the first two goals are new in this plan, protecting our stormwater management program and incorporating electric vehicle charging stations in new developments, those are viewed. And then under the needs and opportunities, all of these, I think, are either new or have been modified from what the current plan talks about, the natural and cultural resources. So the first one is, there's a need to, for improved marketing of natural resources in Houston County, meaning that we need to let people know what's out there to be able to take advantage of, as far as our parks and open space and preserved areas, cultural to take advantage of as far as our parks and open space and preserved areas, cultural, historic properties and that type of thing. Number two deals with preserving and identifying our historic resources, particularly as Houston County continues to grow at a rapid rate. Number three picks up on the city's plans for trails by identifying there's a desire for additional multi-modal pedestrian trails that provide connectivity. Number four addresses water, bodies of water in the county. And number five talks about proper drainage, proper maintenance of drainage facilities. On page 14, under community facilities and services, number, goal number four is new, ensuring high-quality public infrastructure is available to support growth and development. And then the needs and opportunities have been, or either new or again have been consolidated with some of the previous needs and opportunities. Further investment in recreational needs for all residents is something that was carried forward. Continue to make improvements to public buildings on a priority basis. That, I think, is something specific to Perry with the modifications, buildings and so forth that we are anticipating over the coming years. Also, number three and four, I believe, are come specifically from stakeholder meetings that were held in the city of Perry, making sure that we have fully staffed, community-focused, and well-trained fire and law enforcement services that reflect, enhance the quality of life for our residents. And also, number four, making sure that we have adequate officers for staffing of parks and special events as those facilities continue to grow. Under transportation, goals number one and three are new or modified. Number one, improve traffic flow on main thoroughfares, modifies one of the existing goals. And number three addresses ensuring that we have pedestrian walkability and safety throughout the county. Under the needs and opportunities, number one is similar to an existing goal relating to public transportation. Number two consolidates several goals into a gateway and streetscape requirement, so needs for visitors. And broadband on page 18 is a completely new element of the plan required under the, by the Department of Community Affairs. So this entire section is new. The goal here is to ensure that all county, Houston County residents and businesses have access to affordable and reliable broadband service to support daily activities. There are a number of needs and opportunities that were presented by the regional commission. The city did, the city staff did provide one update at the very end there that's highlighted in that the city intends to address public Wi-Fi by establishing ties to the internet in the downtown area to support residents and visitors in that area. And then we get into, on page 23, are there any questions on those sections at this point? Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions. Do you want to go?
Sure, sure.
Sorry, I just have seen this today, so I just want to make one comment about the software center that we also need to think at the same time. But you know, we get a software center here, the employees may not, employees may be all over the country, they can live anywhere, so it's not necessarily a population boosting or even a housing issue when it comes to that because many people in the software industry live nowhere near their, you know, headquarters. So that's something to keep in mind about that. Also, on page 11, when you mentioned maintaining municipal separate storm sewer systems, what does that mean exactly? Putting in a whole new?
No, so right now, the city of Perry, and I'm not sure about the other entities, but we are under a permit from the state environmental protection department, I believe, or division. We have an MS4 permit, and we have, there are certain things that we have to follow as far as what our ordinances say, as far as maintaining or requiring developers to install stormwater improvements. There are certain things that the city has to do on his property and the streets and so forth. So there's a permit process that we're required to maintain. So that was, one of the goals is to make sure that we continue to do that in an appropriate way and to follow through with any updates that may come. Those permits are good for, I think, four or five years, and then they get renewed. Ours will be renewed at the end of this, either this year or next year, I don't remember now, but we're anticipating that there will be additional requirements that we'll have to implement. So that's, that's what that is. It's related just to water management.
Okay. And I wondered about the installation of, or the incorporation of electric vehicle charging stations as a part of new and existing developments. Would that, do you see that approaching the level of a requirement in a new development?
I think it may. I mean, I'm not sure that it will immediately, but I think over, over time, that certainly could be a requirement. I was reading an article late last week, and they indicated that by 2030, the United States will need to have somewhere like 42 million charging stations across the country because they anticipate that that's how quickly electrical vehicles are going to take hold. And currently, we have about 100,000 across the country. So that's certainly something that I think we need to be keeping in mind, that that, that infrastructure is going to be a necessity as we move forward, whether it becomes a requirement or whether developers will recognize they need to install that themselves. It's something I need to keep in mind.
On page 14, after the goals, number four, ensure high-quality public infrastructure. I just wondered what all that included?
So I think that that is anything relating to community facilities and services. I think that is the buildings that the city is anticipating needing as we grow. It includes the water and sewer lines as well as the new water treatment facility that we're looking at, making sure the road, we have adequate roads. So all of that may follow into transportation, but any city-provided facility or service, making sure that it's adequate for what we anticipate from a growth standpoint.
Okay. I didn't really, I just wanted to make sure I understood that was all the things that typically think of as, as infrastructure and not something different. And, you know, the next one really caught my eye, further investments are needed to meet recreational needs of all residents. I know that typically the county does not participate in the, in the building or the whatever, a recreational facility. So how does this play into the county's comprehensive plan?
Well, this is all part of the county. This is the county's plan. What I, what we're looking at is the joint comprehensive plan. I wanted to highlight these, and then when we move forward, I'll talk about some things that are more specific to Perry related to the character areas map specifically. But all of these, I think a lot of this, and Laura may be able to comment, but I think from that standpoint, it's probably the cities that had the most input relating to that, but it goes into the plan for all of Houston County.
That's all I have so far.
Okay. Anything else, any other questions or comments? All right. Go back to page 23. And Holly, if you could pull the map up. So you'll remember as we go, as we bring up rezoning applications, annexations, special exceptions, there's a, there's a standard in there that asks, how does that application comply with the comprehensive plan? And we're always saying, well, it's in, you know, the suburban residential character area, and here's what that character area says. Well, we've kind of noticed over the last few years that it doesn't really, sometimes those character areas don't necessarily help us one way or the other. And so we wanted, what we wanted to do was try to get a little more specific where we can in defining what those character areas are and then looking at where they go along the ground to make more sense, at least for the city of Perry, and how we use, how we use this when we're evaluating those types of applications. So on the, excuse me, on the screen, you'll see the, the draft character areas map for the entire county. And I wanted to show you that because if you look up at the northern part of the county, around Warner Robins, Centerville, the plan is, is created using really broad strokes. The pink color that you see there is the suburban residential character area, and then the little green and red lines that run through that are either gateway corridors or in-town corridors along the major arteries. And those plans are real, that, that area of the county is really done without too much regard to what the underlying development patterns are. And so in contrast, if you slide down to Perry, so what we've tried to do is to be more specific, more parcel-based in how we lay out the, those character areas in the city. And you'll see there are a number, a number more character areas that we used in Perry than is generally used in the rest of the county. So what we're going to do now is Holly's going to take off all of those character areas, and then we're going to start going one by one with each character area and kind of talking about what they are and where they are. In general, the, the goals or the land use element, most of those are new or have been consolidated and redefined. First goal is to promote new and infill development in areas with adequate existing infrastructure capacity, so that we're not promoting development in areas where we're having to run supplies to get to them, for example. Develop design standards to promote developments that reduce or eliminate negative impacts on the surrounding built environment. Number three is a carryover from the current plan. And number four, develop standards and incentives for redevelopment of obsolete or underutilized properties. And those goals, needs, and opportunities have all been somewhat revised or consolidated as well. Number one, gateways identified in the city's need improved regulations to improve aesthetics and usability. Number two, there's a need for increased coordination with Houston County Board of Education regarding future development. Number three, there's a need to focus on what development looks like to maintain the character in each respective municipality. Number four, infill development and redevelopment opportunities exist in the cities. Number five, Houston County continues to experience significant population growth and what impact that has on land use. Number six is a carryover from the existing plan, ensuring that new development is not incompatible with existing character throughout Houston County. And then we get into, we're getting at the bottom on page 24 and on 25, we get into the character areas themselves. The first two items there on 25 are neighborhood node and commercial node, and I'm going to hold off on talking about those until the end. Those are two new elements that, that were included in this draft that apply, right now, apply only to Perry, and we'll talk about those in a moment. And then we're going to go through each of the character areas. Some of them we'll skip over if they don't apply to Perry or Perry's service area. The first one is conservation character area, and this is, these are areas that are either not developable due to topographic challenges or have been preserved formally through state-designated or federally designated refuges such as national forests or wildlife refuges. In this case, you can see South Old Perry is the Flat Creek Public Fishing Area, and then the area, the properties owned by the state that are part of or surrounding the Georgia National Fairgrounds and Ag Center have been included in that character area because they are included in the text of this conservation character area. Next is agricultural, and you can see that it's not really within the city limits but around the periphery and in part of the service area that we're looking at, particularly to the west of the city. And that is a majority of the land in the southern part of the county and includes not only active and passive agricultural activities, but also forestry. Next is rural village, and this, there's a small portion of this in the city's service area near the intersection of 247 and 247 Spur, you see there. And this is rural villages in varieties from all communities, which are clustered around major roadways and intersections, again, most notably in the southern part of the county. All right. Now we have suburban residential, and this is a character area that covers most of the county and a major portion of the city. This is the areas that are currently developing as residential and primarily as the newer subdivisions that we see today. We did add, recommend adding, or making some changes to suggested development patterns to indicate that this is an area, the suburban residential character area is a location of a mix of housing densities and types, including single-family, townhomes, multifamily, and mixed uses, and also adding that commercial development within identified nodes that support suburban residents should be something to consider as well. The next character area is traditional neighborhood, and we have proposed rewriting the entire section defining what a traditional neighborhood is. And what we have suggested is that these are neighborhoods that were generally developed between the late 1800s and the 1960s with grids laid, with streets laid out in a modified grid pattern. Lots of houses are a variety of sizes and architectural styles. Landscaping has matured over time to provide a dead street canopy. These neighborhoods have historically included a mix of income levels. They're walkable, bikeable because of the street patterns. They're walkable, bikeable because of the street patterns, and also are generally within walking and biking distance to downtown or some of the other commercial corridors in town. And so these areas have been identified on the map here as primarily the areas directly around downtown Perry or along the General Courtney Hodgson's corridor, and again, meet those criteria. Next, we go into more commercial areas, the gateway corridor. This is primarily major routes that are expected to be developed primarily commercially, but are in areas that still have undeveloped properties, so the opportunity to control now what the development looks like and how it's developed is the primary target for the gateway corridor. This corridor was originally of current plan. The current plan is, I believe, a thousand-foot wide swath that just encircles the city following all of Perry Parkway and what was proposed to Perry, an extension of Perry Parkway to the southeast of the boundary. What we have recommended is that, really based on development patterns that we're seeing, the area that really should be identified as gateway corridor are those properties that front on Perry Parkway and are located basically between Interstate 75 and US 341 to the south. And so really just the northeastern portion of the city, and also identified as properties and not that thousand-foot swath. And we did make some recommended changes to the suggested development patterns by including residential as a use that was appropriate in this area, also incorporating sidewalks and street scape amenities in these corridors. The suggested land use designations, we also recommended adding residential, and as a suggested implementation measure, added access control measures. So as you know, we have certain limitations on how many curb cuts you can have on Perry Parkway, and we're going to make sure that's part of the plan in moving forward. Next is the in-town corridor, and we've used this, suggested this be used in a much broader way than just as part of a corridor. We have several commercial areas that in the current plan were not defined, or either they were part of suburban residential, for example. And so in this case, we've taken, suggested that properties that are around the hospital area, you can see to the, right there, the hospital and the offices, office uses that are in that area, that should be part of an in-town corridor. Let me zoom back down a little bit, I don't remember where all these are. Some areas just south of downtown, along Ball Street and Turricken are areas that really didn't fit into the downtown, were part of a traditional neighborhood, and therefore should be an in-town corridor. As we're on the south side of there, areas primarily agricultural village in the area of Exit 134, I believe it is, those fell into the in-town corridor category for development, although there are some properties that are still available for development. The primary area that is in-town corridor is Salmon Boulevard, and we've, again, rather than doing a thousand-foot swath, we've tried to look at a parcel, on a parcel basis, to identify those properties. And so in some areas, it's rather narrow, in other areas, it extends down Hampton Court, for example. We've also included in here the properties that front on the future St. Patrick's Drive Extension, so there's quite a bit of area that is located between Interstate 75 going up to, back up to Perry Parkway, and also the commercial properties that are located on Megan Road, Highway 41. Again, here, we've recommended that residential should be part of the mix of uses, again, incorporating sidewalks and street scape amenities, and adding as a suggested implementation measure, retrofitting existing parking lots with landscape islands and streetside landscaping. Next is the redevelopment district, and this has been revised, I believe in the current plan, it was called downtown redevelopment, and was written primarily for Warner Robins and their plans to develop a downtown area. We recommended that it be just redevelopment and added three areas to, of Perry to this. So the first area that we felt really fit more into a redevelopment category is General Courtney Hodgson's Boulevard, and you can see that in this area. Next, we have an area along Valley Drive, consisting primarily of the older hotels that we've been talking about recently, need for redevelopment in that area. And the third area is right across the interstate from that, and that's the area at the end of Hampton Court, Hampton Court Extension, Smith Drive, kind of in that area where it's really been used as sort of a dumping ground at this point. So those are the three areas that we felt were, should be classified as redevelopment. In the suggested development patterns and suggested implementation strategies, we've included reference to brownfield redevelopment and adaptive reuse and using brownfield grant programs. Emerging Town Center is in here, that does not apply to anything in the city of Perry, so we'll skip that, that's used in the city of Centerville. And then next, we have downtown. This was originally, in the current plan, is listed as town center, and we thought that since Perry has the only downtown in the county, that it was appropriate to just call it downtown and talk about Perry. So we've revised the description of this character area, as you can see there. I do want to point out that as part of this, we are recommending that the downtown strategic plan that was adopted last December be incorporated by reference into this plan so that we can use those recommendations and goals as well when we're looking at developments in the downtown area. The suggested development patterns have all been revised or modified to really recognize the unique character of downtown and how development needs to take place to maintain that character. And then finally, well, two more, base environments relates to the Robbins Air Force Base and doesn't apply to Perry and kind of like industrial. And there were not a whole lot of changes to that other than just redefining the areas that it applies and adding waste services as one of the land use designations. So with that, oh, so with that, we go back to, sorry, page 25, the different nodes. So what we wanted to do with these nodes is recognize that there are areas based on the intersection of major streets where commercial could develop that may not necessarily right now be identified as a gateway corridor or an in-town corridor, or they may, and we want to recognize that that's an area where higher density or higher intensity commercial is appropriate. And so if we could go to, can you do the commercial notes first? So what we've done is looked at, again, those major intersections, and kind of created these circles to indicate that properties in those general areas, and they're not specifically defined by that circle, so council has some flexibility in looking at whether it's a little bit larger than that or not quite that large as we're looking at and evaluating applications. But in these commercial nodes, we've identified, if we could just zoom out, starting at the top, the intersection of Houston Lake Road and Highway 127, in the area where Club Villa and Country Club are located, so that is one of the nodes we've identified. And as you can see, it's completely within the suburban residential character area. We've also identified the intersection of Langston Road and Houston Lake Road as a potential commercial node, and we already are seeing some commercial in that area. That's also where the extent of Langston Road Extension will come in, and we've also included that on the map for future reference. Coming back in, I guess, well, let's go down, Langston Road Extension. We've identified the intersection of Langston Road Extension and Kings Chapel Road as a potential commercial node, as well as Langston Road Extension and San Saddle Creek Road as a potential commercial node in the future. And then let's go up the, start at the bottom and work our way up the Perry Parkway, whoops, sorry, just needed to do that. So the intersection of Perry Parkway and 341 is a potential commercial node, part of that's already in the gateway corridor character area, there's already more commercial development there at that corner, but in the future, that's because of the roadways, that's a potential commercial node. And then moving up the corridor there, the intersection of Houston Lake and Perry Parkway is an area where higher intensity commercial would be appropriate, that's the area where the public currently is, and some of the other developments that we did see recently. And then continuing along the Parkway, the intersection of Perry Parkway and Megan Road is a potential commercial node, and then Perry Parkway and the interstate is an obvious commercial node. And then just to the east there, Megan Road and Langston Road is a potential for, has a potential for commercial development, creating a commercial node at that intersection. And working our way down, I believe we've identified Courtney Hodgson's Boulevard and Marshallville Road, Larry Walton Parkway, as kind of in that area of the interchange, but that is an area where higher density or higher intensity would be appropriate. And then also along South Perry Parkway in the vicinity of Exit 134 and Ag Village is also an area where higher intensity commercial development would be appropriate. So those are the commercial nodes, I believe we got all of them. And then we also identified some areas where, within residential areas, there's already some commercial, like the Lumpkin Shell, for example. And so we've gone ahead and identified some neighborhood nodes where it would be appropriate for some commercial that would be primarily, in our minds, would primarily be neighborhood serving, that would allow people to walk or bike to something close by to get some convenience goods. And so we've identified along Houston Lake Road, the intersection of Kings Chapel and Houston Lake as one of those commercial nodes, the intersection of Houston Lake Road and Houston Lake Drive as one of those commercial nodes. And then in the New Hope Neighborhood, the intersection, or in the general vicinity of the intersection of WF Reagan and Peach Street, where there's currently an old commercial building that's been used as a, or a recreation, I believe, but certainly has an opportunity for some neighborhood commercial. And then at the intersection of Valley Drive and Airport Road, these are, there are some commercial uses there now that are more intense than what I would anticipate being a commercial, in a resident neighborhood node, but nonetheless, we felt that that was appropriate for that area. And so that is sort of modifications that have been recommended to the text of the character areas and then how we've suggested they be applied here in Perry. And so we're happy to answer any questions you have or take comments. One thing I forgot to mention is there is a public hearing, a final public hearing on December the 16th, I believe that's at 5:30 at the Houston County Annex, so that's where Regional Commission's going to be taking additional comments. We need to, if we're going to make any final adjustments, try to get those back to the Commission fairly quickly as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have or take any comments on what we presented tonight.
Well, I have two questions, I'm sorry. I have two questions. Under the traditional neighborhood, when the years were 1800 and the 1960s, I wonder of what those numbers were based, I mean, like 1960s, it's not clear which of the 60s, but how did, was that just a kind of a random selection?
Yeah, so we were kind of looking at what was currently defined as traditional neighborhood, and what we felt should be defined as traditional neighborhood. And I think looking at what's developed around downtown, you've got, you know, areas of Washington Street, for example, that clearly have Victorian homes, that probably date back to the late 1800s, going into Creek Wood, for example, a lot of, some of those areas were developed in the 1960s. My neighborhood in Country Club Estates is primarily 1960s, and probably some houses that came in in the 70s, but the neighborhood itself was laid out in the 60s. And so I think, based on the development patterns that we have in Perry, those, you can kind of define, those were the areas that were developed before starting to seem more what we recognize today as a subdivision that's primarily auto-related, automobile-related with front-loading. um, that's primarily auto-related, automobile-related with front-loading colleges, um, clearly out in areas where you have to use your, your car to get, for any services. Um, these other neighborhoods, traditional neighborhoods, who are really more, while people may use their cars, they are close enough that if you had to, you really want to, um, to get groceries or to get some service downtown, whatever. And so that's kind of what we were thinking of. Um, and there were some neighborhoods that we initially said, you know, maybe should be in the traditional neighborhood. Cheshire was one of those. And then we kind of started looking at the character and the timeframe and decided, well, maybe it's really more, um, suburban residential. So, you know, we really kind of tried to look at the city and its development pattern and which one of these neighborhood, uh, character areas really fit, um, that development pattern. And, you know, we can still change that, but that's kind of what our thinking was. 1960, after 1960, you start to see more, um, tract home, um, development as opposed to more personalized to individual, while they're still a subtract.
I think my only other question is, what, what is the weight? Uh, what weight does it carry for somebody, for an area to be called, this is its character? This is the, this character area? This is this character area? And, and when they come into zoning, how does the character area relate to zoning? And that sort of thing?
So the, the comprehensive plan itself and the character areas map is sort of a guide. It's not, um, it's not a, it's not an ordinance, so we're not saying this is suburban residential and that's all it can be. So this guide, um, both the text and the map, will help us determine whether or not we need to make modifications to our zoning ordinance, um, and so the map to help implement this. Um, and so, yes, we will use, I'm anticipating that over the next few months, once this is adopted, that we'll be going back and, and looking at the zoning ordinance and the zoning map to see whether there are areas that we need to make changes to, um, to, to be in line with this. Um, and there may be, um, some areas where we decide we don't want to, for whatever reason, um, make some change. But this is really more of a vision or a guide of how, what we think we want to be in 25 years or 20 years or whatever timeframe we're kind of thinking of. And then the ordinance is maps, zoning maps are how we implement this, if that's what we're wanting.
Thank you.
Sure. One other item that, um, that I've mentioned is the last two pages are the community work program for Perry. So if you would, I don't want to go over that, um, tonight, but there's some areas that are highlighted as items that are new. But, um, and I know this is going to get more into, um, strategic plan, how the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan relate to one another. So we'll leave that for another time, because we need to just talk about that. But again, that is part of the, of the comprehensive plan that, that needs to be looked at as well.
Right, very quickly, do you, regarding the neighborhood nodes, is we currently going to anticipate identifying more and more of those?
I think that's possible. Um, I think that we have, I mean, this is what we're recommending for the next five years, or the plan has to be updated on a five-year basis. And so, um, you know, while there are some areas that, you know, could possibly turn into a commercial node in that five years, they're kind of, you know, on the fringe, particularly along, um, the new road that's, that's proposed out there. Um, I think once we've identified them here, it would be hard to create new ones until we update the plan.
Correct.
Uh, so if, if there are areas that we think we need to add more, we need to go ahead and try to get them in now.
If I were to buy a house in a neighborhood node, would I know that I'm in a neighborhood node when I do that? Because I just think it might be helpful to that homeowner going, hey, I might see commercial, you know, problem around me and kind of be aware of that going in.
Yeah. So, um, I'm not sure how we're going to, um, put that on a zoning map, for example, but this map will definitely be on our website. Um, and we'll post on site as, as well as we can, you know, Tabitha, make sure that's out there.
All the celebrations, you know, available to the public, I think, if they, they'll have to do their due diligence, but we're going to make it available and it's open and honest, as transparent as it can be. I don't think it's our responsibility when they go to buy a house and say, you better go look at this map because it's potentially, because we don't know. They, they may be buying it to convert to commercial. So just making sure that they're aware, that they know where the resources are and, and they're, they're real, I hope we do a good job explaining that to them.
I should ask Laura if there's anything else that I've not, okay.
You know, and I would encourage everybody if wants to see the final product to go to the public hearing. There is going to be a number of people that are at the public hearing. I had, I've had a number of conversations this week with people who, uh, live over on the Langston Road Extension, and they're really interested in where we think that's going to run and where those, you know, commercial nodes are going to develop out there. So I, I expect them to be at the meeting to, to better understand. I don't think they have any problems other than the fact that they want to know what impact it's going to have on them over the next 15 or 20 years. So, uh, it's, it's been really interesting. We've had as much interest in the development of this plan as I have ever witnessed here in Bay Ridge, so. Yes?
I didn't think of one thing. So after the public hearing, we'll take all of the feedback from the public comment period, prepare the, the plan, and we will submit it to the Department of Community Affairs on behalf of the four governments in Houston County. Department of Community Affairs has 30 days to review it and come back with all good, proceed with adoption, or make these changes, have you considered this? They're looking at it with a fresh set of eyes. Um, so it's going to be two months at least, you know, probably sometime in your, in January before we receive those comments back from DCA, and then come back to probably a February meeting for adoption. So it's still, we do want to get as complete a comments as we can by the public hearing so that then we can start that process with the state of getting a review done so it can be adopted fully by the local government in February.
What question or comments do you have relative to the comprehensive plan?
If anyone does have additional comments, you think of additional comments and others, planning commissioners here as well, that would be divided, so they're familiar with what's going on, since we aren't going to be, have a meeting with them before we need to, um, get to the comments back. But any comments, if you think of something, give them to me or Holly, and we'll make sure that those are evaluated and incorporated.
Mr. Wood, I would like to applaud you and the Regional Commission for the work that you have done with this. It's very, very detailed, and I think it's going to help us a great deal as we continue to move forward with our strategic plan. We can look and see where we think the growth is going to be, what are the things that we're going to have to be facing over the next, you know, years, years is five years, but I think it's probably more of 15 years that we're going to be looking at the growth in those areas. And so I think it's going to be very critical that it be as, as finite as this plan is. And I really appreciate, I assume you and Mr. Wood have been taking the charge on that with the Regional Commission. And so thank you very much for the quality of product.
Has played a major role, yes, yes.
Thank you for the quality of product that you produce. Council members, any questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Item 3C is Fire Emergency Service Department. 3C 1 is Assistance to Firefighters Grant, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, FEMA has opened up the 2021, uh, funding opportunity for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, and, uh, the Perry Park Department would like to apply for this grant, and it requires a 10% match, so we need Mayor Council's approval. We would like to ask for a, uh, SCBA refill station this year. That's, that's what we'll make our application for. It's about a s- between a $48,000 to $64,000, uh, requirement or, uh, price for that. So it's going to be about $6,400 match from the city period.
Council members, any questions or concerns relative to that? Mr. Gilmore, any comments?
No, it's fine. While I've done this in the past, we have not had much luck with this, but, uh, it's potentially a good way for us to get items that we may not immediately need, but would be very beneficial for us to have. Question? I think one of the last ones we got was the, uh, ventilation or whatever tubes coming down for the exhaust and all that type of stuff. Wasn't that one of those?
Yes, sir. And also, uh, two years ago, we did get the self-contained breathing apparatus. That was $189,000.
This is just change to you guys. I mean, I was, I was expecting $100,000 at least, you know, a new, new station, new truck or something, you know?
That's, that's coming next.
Council members, do we have concurrence to allow the department to move forward with this firefighter's grant? Do you have a concurrence? Please move forward. I wish you luck in getting that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. 3D is the Office of the City Manager. 3D 1 is Traffic Control Adjustment. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, lady of packing. It's a recommendation from the administration, and I go through why I think it will be beneficial, but the primary thing we're recommending is to remove the traffic control device at the intersection of Carroll Street and Washington Street and replace that with a three-way stop sign. Uh, as I've indicated there, on occasion, when that device is going out, uh, at least my office has received calls and everything about, that's great, when you're just going to make it a stop sign and we put the traffic light in. For a good portion of any day, there is no need because of the speed and traffic volumes and everything to have a traffic control device at that intersection. You still will have a traffic control device at the intersection of Washington and Commerce and Washington and Main. And so we think that this would be advantageous. Thoughts, Council?
It's hard when I think of it.
Yes, sir.
Only you get the hard of it.
Yes, right. Following off Mr. Hunt's point, we remember the number of comments you got when we pulled the traffic device off, devices, excuse me, off of Jernigan Street. You know, we initially had some, but people have adjusted to the traffic.
Any thoughts relative to that? Are you willing to try and see how this works?
That's our life, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
That's our life, right?
Yes.
We pay for maintenance and everything. What do we do?
No, it's not DOG, it's not DOG route anymore. So what do you thought?
Well, we'll see how it works, and if we have traffic back up or people complain about it, we'll tell them to call City Manager.
Hey, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. Maybe this is such a good plan.
All right, Mr. Gilmore, please move forward. We'll see how that works. 3D 2 is Peaches to Beaches Event. I understand you have a recommendation for us on that event.
I do. Council members, if you could take a look on your board, Pat. You may remember they originally had their application and then also talked about some additional items that they were requesting from the city. So if you will indulge me, go through each of the items and then just whether there's a recommendation from the administration or not. They will, you will be asked to approve the special event permit at your meeting tomorrow. On the first item, they asked for the use of the new city hall grounds. Administration recommends approval for that, and they remember they've used that grounds before. They recommend a way with special event fee. Administration recommending a denial on this. As you can see, it's only a $72 fee for this. Uh, we also, administration-wise, are recommending moving away from having, uh, events that raise money, and then we waive the fee on that. Uh, next item is the use of the city hall parking lot at Ball Street and Main. We recommend approval. They're requesting the blocking of Main Street between Jernigan and Ball Street. Also recommending approval. Requesting the blocking of Jernigan Street between Carroll Street and Main Street. We're recommending the approval of that. Part of that is driven by the fact, you may remember in previous years, they were able to use the East Gate Shopping Center as a location. Uh, the owners at that, uh, property have denied that request now, so that's pulled out of their use. Uh, they are requesting the Fire Department Emergency Response. We recommend that just be handled on shift as needed. They are requesting, uh, emergency response from the Police Department. Also recommending that be handled on shift as needed. Uh, from Public Works, they're requesting assistance with trash can delivery setup and cleanup. We're recommending that Public Works provides codes for street blocking, dumpster for extra trash, no extra duty, and then the club itself is responsible for getting the trash into the dumpster. You may remember we have used dumpsters previously for downtown events. Uh, they are requesting to block off Carroll Street between Jernigan and Ball Street, or Ball Street between Carroll Street and Main Street, and we are recommending, excuse me, denial on that. You may remember they started up their events around Thursday and going into Friday, and the administration is not recommending we block off Carroll Street as one of our major commercial quarters for that time. In other words, downtown, I think, needs to keep open for other uses. They are requesting a strong police surveillance between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM Thursday and through Saturday, are also recommending denial on that. If they feel that they have some need for extra security, then they can pay the extra duty cost, you know, to the Police Department through that regional process.
Mr. Gilmore, is that 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM?
Yes, I'm sorry, 8:00 AM.
They're, they're looking for all, they're looking for like 14 hours worth of service.
Correct. Uh, number 11, uh, safety codes on Walker Rose Tractor Display Site. Recommending denial on that. Uh, the information sign, recommend approval for that. Uh, use of the drive by Legacy Park for vendors. We're strongly recommending denial on that. And then tied with that, they're requesting approval of golf cart shop transport between Legacy Park and downtown. Recommending denial on that. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Council members, questions or comments relative to the recommendations made by the administration on the Peaches to Beaches Event?
Uh, as recommended, we have one vote for, and we have concurrence to move forward as recommended. Mr. Gilmore, you have unanimous concurrence to move forward with your recommendation?
Thank you.
Item 3D 3 is review speed bumps on Northside Road and Cedar Ridge Drive. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. On this request, the city manager comes in with his head on a platter, realizing that there was a mistake made and possibly on this process. Uh, going back, this originally came to my office as a recommendation from the Police Department based on concerns from neighbors in this area about the intersection of Northside Road and Cedar Ridge Road, or Cedar Road, about people running the stop sign. Uh, police have been out there, they have done monitoring and everything, but that did not satisfy police, the people who expressed concerns with this. So the recommendation from police, from public sta- safety standpoint was to install one strip for each of the stop signs. On that, it seemed to make sense, you know, coming from police, so I recommended approval with that. Subsequent to that, like probably within three hours after being installed, there were a number of complaints from folks coming in, uh, saying this a number of complaints from folks coming in, saying this was very rough, it's problems, the noise, my husband has a bad back and it causes pain, and so on and so forth. One of the things I think that's very important relative to this intersection is that the issues that are occurring at this intersection all revolve around people who live in that neighborhood, or, you know, neighborhoods right around it. There are no cut-through streets there, you know, so there isn't people coming necessarily from Legacy Park or from downtown, everybody with me on that, like cutting through, this is primarily a local neighborhood issue. But based on a number of comments, of course, the questions that came, very legitimate, was, well, other times if these type of devices or speed bumps go in, there has to be a petition, you know, was there a petition done, do we have that information? And no, it wasn't, because the staff got the okay from myself as a manager for the reasons that I applied. So my recommendation would be, since there's such concern about them being installed, is that we will go back and pull up, and then we will canvas the residents around there to determine what it is or what suggestions that they have to go in and address it, in other words, handle it as a standard petition, if there's enough interest to have it done.
If the local vehicles, as you said, would they want it to come up, are they going to pay for it?
In this particular case, no, sir. Pick it up, or take it out of that city council.
Everyone we've put down so far, as long as I've been on council, goes up, all the stuff.
By far, that's right, following up, Mr. Hunt with his long history on that, and that is why almost always you will hear the administration recommend no on the installation of any of these devices, most of the time. And I think this may be one of the things that goes back there. What is presented to you all as policymakers is that they're speeding, it's dangerous for my child that's out, you know, playing in the street, I can't get out of my driveway, you know, a number of things like that. Usually, not always, but usually particularly when police goes in and their follow-up is, the issue is just the number of vehicles. It's not speeding so much or any of that type of stuff, it's just the number of vehicles, particularly when you come into the community times, people going out to work, taking their kids to daycare, whatever the case may be, and then coming back. And almost always, it is a neighborhood issue, it's not an overall city or traffic issue. But in this case, would be our recommendation to pull up the strips.
Lee, did understanding correctly that we would follow up with residents in the area to get input on other ways that perhaps we can address the issue?
Yes, if there are other ways, or if it turns out a majority of the folks do want to have that device installed.
How many do we currently have?
Speed bumps? Speed bumps? Uh, probably about two, maybe three. One of the most recent one, and it's not recent like just the other day, but one of the successful ones we had was over in District One at the Perry Housing Authority property over there, because that was an area where the people came in, talked to Mr. Mine Grace and Mr. King, indicated that they wanted have that, they went around Cheff and their neighbors. We came in because, I think it's perimeter drive or something like that, the main drive that goes through is a city street, we installed the devices and, and the residents there were very satisfied with that. We also had some install one of those lines over on Walcott Street?
Whipple.
Whipple, I'm sorry, yes, Whipple Street, and that's been successful, that's what far as I'm aware.
Other questions or concerns? Are you in concurrence to move forward with Mr. Gilmore's recommendation of taking them up and going through the normal process? Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence?
Thank you.
Expect your thumb clean tomorrow after we take them up, because there will be some dissatisfied persons.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, me too. I think both are a month to be ready. Item three D four is consider installing sidewalks on a portion of Langston Road.
Yes. My office was contacted by one of the residents who lives out in that area, indicating that he had talked with a number of his neighbors and that they are concerned about the fact with the growing traffic volume on Langston Road, which is correct. The point that they were concerned about was that people like to get out and walk, or they may like to get out and jog, or whatever the case may be, it's very dangerous with the traffic and not much of a shoulder, so could the, would the city consider installing a sidewalk the entire length of Langston Road? I advise gentlemen that no, we're not in a position to do that, because a lot of that property along Langston Road is in the county, so you have to get an okay from the county on that. But then he did bring out a point about, well, maybe it might just be beneficial if we could have a sidewalk installed between the two new subdivisions that have been installed close to the intersection, so that sidewalk can come down from like, or Lake Forest has its entrance and the subdivision across the street from Lake Forest, and come down and connect to the sidewalks on Houston Lake Road. And so that seems to make sense, so would like to recommend to Council that you authorize us to initially at least proceed with some of the design and that type of stuff, get a cost estimate, and then come back to you with the final information about where it would be located. You may remember that this is similar to other times when we've got requests for sidewalk and it seems to make sense, like the portion along Perry Parkway was one of the locations there, and some of the connections, you know, we've talked about, we go through and run an assessment and they come back to you to see if you want to proceed with it.
Could the vast majority of that county?
Not where I'm envisioning, because we'd be going from Houston Lake Road up to whatever would be the farthest street generally, about city subdivisions coming out onto Langston So on the city of Perry side of Langston Road, if you're turning off Houston Lake Road onto Langston, like where the new church is going to go in there, and where they had the discussion about the apartments and all that type of stuff back there, and the Langston Road detention pond, that property right in there is a city, and you may remember through the Planning Commission, we already have the wide, right enough way there, because we require that for future expansion. So if we, or what will be presented to you, Gil, for your consideration if you want to proceed with it further, would be only in the city at the sidewalk we're going in.
Council members, questions, concerns?
If this sidewalk was approved, would it get in line behind Perry Parkway? I mean, we have talked about Perry Parkway a lot, but they still don't have a sidewalk.
Well, following up on that, our consultants in the design process right now for that sidewalk, because Council had approved that project to go ahead, I think there were three different sidewalks at that time.
Does Long Island could design that sidewalk?
We'll follow up and see what the delay is on that. But that, that has been, you all did approve proceeding with that, at least concept-wise and everything, and that has been sent to the consultant to come up with planning costs. I think one of the other things too, council members, is I believe it's important when we do these types of improvements, that as much as possible, we spread them around all of the city. And I know older sections sometimes come up and have a higher priority, but when there's an opportunity to go in and do something in some of the newer areas and everything, I think that'd be beneficial as well, give those folks more of a sense that, yes, they are in the city and they are getting something from the city.
Are you agreeable to allow them to move forward to develop a concept and bring it back to us? Please move forward, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Item three D five is a DDA proposal update and financing request, Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and Council, as the mayor alluded to, I am here tonight on behalf of the Perry Downtown Development Authority to speak with you all about the possibility of working with the Downtown Development Authority on a project. I'm actually going to stand by the screen, although I like to do that, and my vision is not what it used to be. Project Handle, I assure you by how you all heard this project, there was a new paperwork recently announced, and the DDA was prized in their most recent meeting in regards to discussions with the downtown. Going back, I believe it was October at some point in time, the Downtown Development Authority requested from you all a transition of the property shown here, that's the parking lot, a current parking lot at Ball and Main, the transition of that property to the Downtown Development Authority, so that they may pursue downtown redevelopment and building projects within the core. And, you know, I think it was actually a good timing with Brian's presentation this evening, because it was alluded to in there, parking in downtown, and how it is preferable that the parking is on periphery in downtown, and also the Downtown Development Authority and what the city's been working on over a number of years, transitioning the available downtown property to its best and highest use. So with that in mind, the Downtown Development, Downtown Development Authority set about and looking to possibly locate a project at this time. Before we get into it, I want to cover parking, because you all hear about it, I've already heard about it, and talk a little bit about how we are planning to mitigate the perceived parking issue in downtown Perry. What you have in that parking lot currently is twenty-five parking spaces. I believe you all saw, it's purged recently where on Main Street, there was an addition of thirty-six spaces, that was made just about a month ago, I believe, Ms. Spencer's crew was out there doing that work. In addition to that, the city's working on a number of other projects that will increase the number of available parking spaces downtown, you can see those here. Some of the primary ones, of course, is going to be the event center, where we are currently, and expanding out that parking space, and then something that this newbie's working on, and you all should hear something from very soon, is the railroad easement down to the, I guess, the southern portion of downtown, along the railroad there, where the administration building is going to go, that should be a significant amount of public parking that can be developed in that spot as well. And then, of course, parking study, I know that things have changed in downtown Perry in the first two minutes, but when the parking study was completed in 2018, you had average occupancy of downtown public parking, thirty-four percent. During P times, you know, the evenings, around lunchtime, that type of day, it's forty-two percent. So the parking is there, you know, the perception of the non-parking downtown, I believe, is quite frankly incorrect, but as a city, always looking to make sure that we do have adequate parking for our downtown merchants and property owners and business owners. What you see here is the initial concept for a destination restaurant in downtown Perry. It's what they call a catalytic project that will bring jobs and investment to downtown, and I believe will drive foot traffic and help to build upon successes of what we currently have downtown, and we'll see very soon, of restaurants, patrons downtown, and all that type of thing. It is a one-hundred-and-seventy-seat restaurant, they will have patio seating, bar seating, they will brew their own beer on site, they'll have space for private meetings back there, and of course, the kitchen, seventy-two-hundred-square-foot facility that would fit quite nicely on the space that you also generously provide the DDA to work with. One of those things, I think I mentioned it too, you either can pass or land, you can work with both, you all think they can land and work as what they're doing. Kind of changing, I know, I'm trying to take the site plan and superimpose it on the actual site, as you can see here, they were able to maintain some of the tree canopy, that's right, I mean, I just see this other street's current building, the prospect building was towards here, so it's kind of a little bit like in the space. In regards to financing, and this is where the request comes to you all this evening, is assistance with the financing. The Downtown Development Authority saw this as an important enough project to work with the prospect and providing them with the project financing for locating something here in the City of Perry. You can see here a breakdown, it's a relative about two-point-two-million-dollar project, it's construction, it's FF and E, young crew, equipment, all that stuff. And then the sources, and you can see there, prospectively, a two-million-dollar revolving, I'm sorry, two-million-dollar revenue bond for the Perry Downtown Development Authority. What we're looking at right now, and some general numbers have been run, nothing's finalized at this point in time, but a thirty-year revenue bond issuance, this would need to be backed by the debt, by the city, by IGA, you know, DDA's can go out and issue their revenue bonds, all that type of thing, if they had a source of income that they could pay those revenue bonds back with. Usually that's some sort of guaranteed bill, or some sort of IGA with the city that provides, you know, one-hundred-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar per year, that type of thing, that the borrower or the person that issuing the bonds will look at, yes, they're good with this. Our DDA does not have a revenue showing, so that's where the city can come in and essentially guarantee the payback of the revenue bonds, should the DDA and assistance with the project not be able to cover that. We're looking at a great percentage rate plus purchase options, right now we're looking at ten, fifteen years on purchase option, and the annual debt service on a bond issuance such as this would be around one-hundred-and-thirteen, one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars per year. The lease agreement with the prospect will cover the debt service, so it's not like the city is coming in and funding this project location, they are going to be paying the debt service and all the revenue bonds for the life of the project. Is there any questions over this right now?
I have some questions.
Sure.
I think I'm concerned because there's only one source of funding for this project, the city of Perry. Typically, when we see projects downtown, there's a lot of private investment, there's money from Georgia Cities, other organizations, I'm not sure why we are going into the commercial landlord business, and then when their ten-thousand dollars comes in every month to pay their rent, that would be great, but if they go bust, we're up there.
The city will be responsible about that.
Yes. But I mean, we don't have this anywhere else.
What's that?
I mean, do we sell bonds to help anybody else cover the business?
This would be a first for the Downtown Development Authority, however, it's a very common practice for mature, progressive Downtown Development Authorities, this is from their constitutionally provided authorities that they can do if coming in and actually issuing these bonds.
Aren't there some models, like the one in the Grange, is identical to this, to the restaurant they get over there?
There are, there are a number of projects, I can certainly give that information to you all, that essentially mirror what it is our Downtown Development Authority's looking to do in here.
And even to lose one with ten million dollars, I mean, on their, their bonding on their restaurants, they did the same identical thing, but they built four or five restaurants instead of one, and one of them happened to be a brewery.
That's correct, I think maybe that's a two...
I mean, I know that, I don't, I'm sure they've had great projects there, and that's not really, not that you know about their projects, but why are we looking at it like this? Why are these people putting in so little, they got very small amounts again in the game, they do, based on the core, ten percent of the whole project, and Perry's picking up the rest. Why did they not go to any wide price, there's no bank involved, why is Georgia Cities program not involved, or anybody else?
Sure, I don't think, if you look at these types of projects and you see a nice capital stack up there, the reason it is structured as it is here is this is the most favorable way for them to actually make out it, it is. And the Downtown Development Authority, again, with the idea of promoting beneficial individual development in the downtown district, saw it as important and... development in the downtown district, saw it as important enough to seek to provide that funding to them. You know, the Georgia Cities, all that type of stuff, you're not gonna get nearly favorable in regards to financing of this type of project. Traditional lenders, you're not gonna get a favorable structure such as this. So it is favorable to them, but it's, it's the Downtown Development Authority incentivizing critical, you know, catalytic projects in the downtown development district. And I have been privy to some of the financial documents at this point in time, and it's a barrier by the project, the projections are favorable, you know, currently they are doing very well, they have a long track record of the principles of the project, of successful restaurant ownership.
So how many years of their financials haven't we seen?
Of their financials, I've seen, I've seen the past two years, but I've seen the projections for this project up to three years. And, and, you know, all that, all the due diligence, you know, certainly we'll take a longer look at the financial statements, we'll take a look at this projections, all of that, that's, we're not gonna go as much longer. However, you know, in looking at it, it does appear that it is a strong project with, you know, sound financial.
Are they, are they not sound enough to come without the city footing the bill for their building?
I can answer that question.
I mean, they are, isn't this the same company that a couple of years ago, three years ago, had about two and a half million to invest? And that, but it never, never happened, and so I just wondered what had changed that, that, I mean, you know, I can see, excuse me for this, but I can see if we lived in Jeffersonville, we were in Jeffersonville, and we needed some type of catalytic project to enhance and grow or even kick off our downtown, but we've had so much successful private investment in downtown, especially in the restaurant slash bar business, I just don't understand why we're gonna ask the taxpayers of Perry to build a building for a company that's apparently very, very successful already. I have a hard time understanding that.
Well, I would look at it as we're asking the taxpayers to, I mean, they're gonna pay for construction of the building, and they're gonna pay the revenue bond, debt service. Yes, and then the availability, the city would be responsible, but again, you know, we think it's on sound financial footing to where I would not anticipate that happening.
Yeah, a comment, I think I've been on the council for about two years, and I've always felt very well informed about various things. This one here has gotten a little tragic with me as far as people wanting to know more information through emails and phone calls. The first night it was presented, I think it was November, it was, seemed to be in concert with Off the Roads Parking Lot, you know, we'd be taking parking spaces, and that was the first, first item that might need to be looked into, he was ready to retire and sell that corner to, I guess, perhaps parking, you know, visible that's replacing this one. The other issue is when these people call me, they know more about the project than I do, they know the name of the brewery and other things, and I, I just couldn't answer any of their questions. And so I think that's part of the heartburn with people downtown, they see, and I'm not, I guess I'm speaking for them, they see the city of Perry making lots of allowances for a particular type of restaurant that has a brewery, and you've got places downtown that sell drinks and alcohol, and they're thinking, well, this place is shook, being shown favoritism, a lot of favoritism, and I had to start out basically from the ground up. And so I see, I'm a proponent of things like this and the DDA being active, but I think you've gotta take a few steps back and see where our current businesses are, especially the ones downtown. And I would, another thing that they mentioned, some of these people that have gotten in contact with me, is the fact that we are not Jeffersonville, and people are coming downtown on their own, and so why, why, why is Perry and the DDA so aggressive in helping this particular restaurant? So, not to throw cold water or anything, I'm just, just sharing what's been shared to me by the constituents of the city. And so, I don't know if we need to pump the brakes or what, but that's a lot of money.
Certainly understand this is not over the, you know, the reason the DDA has got to the point where they are on this project is because they were asked to. The, the prospects have been looking around downtown or it's been, it's been over a year now, certainly.
It's been much longer than that. I've, I've been involved with knowing about them looking at numerous sites that they have tried to buy and build themselves without success because the current landowners would not do, would not come to any kind of agreement. So this is not something that's brand-new that just happened, the DDA was brought into it to see if there was a way of making this happen downtown.
Correct, and the, go ahead, sir.
How much money there is, illegal money?
Right now, we have structured $320,000.
I'm sorry?
$320,000.
Two, maybe one sixty, seventy?
Right, that's the opinion. Can I go back to Dr. Roberts' question real quick? They had been looking around, they were not able to make something work in Perry. They were actually looking at locating in another city, and the Downtown Development Authority staff and the board members were made aware of this, and it was essentially a conversation with the prospect about how, how can we make this happen in Perry? So that, that's kind of how this came to fruition, and it's, it's the ability of the authority to utilize bonding powers. I honestly don't know why that has not been utilized at this point in time. This would be the first one, however, not necessarily the last. You know, I think it's part of our Downtown Development Authority and our downtown maturing is things are going to get bigger, things are going to get more complicated, but, you know, utilizing all the tools in your toolbox, as you say, as they say, I, I think it's a good thing.
I wondered what's the, what's the fair market value of the lot and what's it offered to them to buy? I mean, if they were looking for property to buy, were they offered that to buy the lot?
It was discussed.
Well, did they say, no, thank you, we don't wish to purchase it?
We went a different direction with...
But Robert, you see what I'm saying? I mean, if they are financially capable, why would they not buy the lot? Why did we have to buy it for them?
It, in order to make the project favorable and incentivize the location downtown, you know, this is what we're looking for. And so far as other frameworks and financial structure and all that, there were a lot of decisions. This is where I didn't ask your question, but in order to construct a facility, you know, have the Downtown Development Authority construct a facility, first equipment, all that type of thing, retaining the land was preferable in that type of scenario. Because if, if, if the project fails, as they say, then the city and the Downtown Development Authority still has a marketable valuable asset, and a very nice facility on a very nice corner in our downtown that can be re-marketed to another prospect, another project, I mean, I, you know, a facility like they're proposing would not last day in our downtown. I mean, that would get scooped up. I mean, I think we're all very aware of how the pre-convince on downtown properties right now. So that, that's the primary, that is retaining control and ownership, at least initially, and then allowing them to purchase it at a later time.
There's no structure plan for them to purchase it or a binding agreement for them to purchase it, is there?
Once the details of worked out, the situation, there will be, I'll purchase options.
Purchase options, but there would be no definite plan that they were gonna purchase this, and that, so that it could go back on property tax rolls and that sort of thing.
We certainly want to transition it as quickly as possible to the property's actions. It's been so far as requiring to purchase at a certain point in time, that can be discussed, I couldn't say this, certainly not.
Robert, one thing I'd like to say something, you know, here's a case, kind of running that we sit here talking about a situation that we have to look beyond what we have right now. And one of the problems is that Perry can remain the same because of the development and because of the droughts that we are going through, we're gonna see a lot of people wanna come to Perry and, and, and try to set up house in the city of Perry, that might be some people not committed, don't see Perry grow in a dignity that it is, but believe me, it gonna grow, because what's happened is that people see a vital part of our community, and like with this project that Robert is talking about. Now, the DDA gonna get involved into it, quite naturally they need to back up the city, and then we can sit here, and I think everyone knows that, you must, all across America, open up things growing, there's a possibility that things can go forward, and just like Robert's saying, if it does not go, if the building isn't built, it's still on the market, somebody gonna come out and get it because it gonna be well presented. And with the brewery there, this is a new thing going, going on, and that most people will see, I'm not an alcoholic, but the bottom line is that we can't legislate to other people what they gonna do, because people gonna do what they gonna do, what they gonna do in Perry, they can do it out of Perry. This is a thing that gonna happen, and we sit here, ain't nothing we can do about it. I know that we all, council members in the city of Perry, we try to control our government what's going there, and we have that right to do that, but the bottom line is that, here come the DDA coming to us, the city got a project and they wanna move forward. Now, everybody understand DDA, we have the city, we have to help as much as we can, do what we can do to enhance our city and more people will enjoy a beautiful restaurant like this. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment there. This council took the action to make that land available to the DDA, and we have been critical of the DDA because they haven't been out doing and growing the city. So they come forward with the first project, that they put all the information together, and it hasn't been a secret because people, these type of projects are done quietly, and so that's, that's how they're done, and then the information comes out, just like it is today, all, all the DDA is asking us is to guarantee the loan, they're not asking us to do the analysis on it, they've already done that, they're, that's why they're an authority, and we gave them the authority to do that, so it's their role to go out and create these things. The only thing they're asking us to do is stand behind what they are proposing to put on that corner that we told them to go develop, so.
Personally, I don't care what kind of business goes on the corner, it's not that it's a brewery or, I mean, it could be a shoe store, I don't care what the business is, but, and I'm all for DDA having possession of that lot, that they could sell to someone, I'm just not in favor of the city of Perry going into debt for a private business, I'm not. I just, I'm not sure that that's what taxpayers want us to do with their money, because if it fails, and no one anticipates failure, but if it fails, we're on the hook, and we have to look at the citizens of Perry and say, oh yeah, we owe, we owe, and, you know, I'm, let DDA try to sell it for a huge profit, it's a premium location, but to involve themselves to partner with somebody, I'm just not sure. I think we ought to be able to, in government, protect the rights of everybody to have access to do business, and if we just take up one and say, I wanna do this just for the sake of the DDA, I mean, that's, we don't exist to make the DDA, that shouldn't be part of our decision-making, it affects the DDA, the DDA is hard at work, and I'm glad they are. I don't want their work to put us in debt or at risk, that's, I think, my bottom line.
Help me understand, this was my first vote two years ago, I think, right beside the bridal shop, the, the construction is going up, I'm, I'm thinking that was a DDA project, and there was a, about the bridal shop, it's gonna be the two-story, is it like a pizzeria? I'm pretty sure that was a DDA project, they came together with Georgia Power, they, there was a big pole there that had all electricity that had to be moved so they could construct it, correct? Now, this, I'm assuming, I don't know this, but I'm assuming the people that are building this two-story structure are paying for that two-story structure, correct? And so that's part of my heartburn with, I just, I don't know, if this guy would think this, but the guy that bought this doing New Orleans restaurant, I'm, I'm thinking he's come in and put a lot of money into that building without some, I'm assuming he doesn't have the backing of the city of Perry. So I'm just trying to understand why this pizzeria in New Orleans can stand on their own, and then why this can't, is, is all I'm, I'm looking at or trying to understand. And I'm all for the DDA, I voted for the two-story pizzeria with the performers on top, but I don't think the, the city went in dead $2 billion.
We spent $100,000 for that project.
Right, right, $100,000.
But it's a much smaller project.
Yeah, but, yeah, but...
We put the $100,000.
Right, downtown is booming right now and the economy is great, but what could happen in two years? I've got a feeling it's gonna come downward, and so now you've got, people strapped for cash, we're in a recession, and then this, you got this payment. So I'm not trying to throw cold water, I'm just a realist, and seems to have, oh, people contacting me, so there must be some heartburn about it, that's all I'm saying.
Some heartburns if they are contacting me in my district. For the brewery, I have been wanting one to be here for no longer than time because that's one of the new best things that people are enjoying now, but I would like to see so more meat in the project from them. And I think the, the DDA is thinking, I'm darned if I do and I'm darned if I don't, but when, if something happens and we are the ones that have to take up the loan, I have some concern. So, you know, if they can find some more meat to put in this project, I would feel better as supporting.
In regards to under equity? In regards to under equity in the project?
I don't know, well, if you can spend and have, if you risk this kind of money against $30,000, I just don't know. If you tell anyone, one that would do it, I wanna go see him tomorrow. What do you think, Lee? What do you think, Lee?
Well, I think there's a couple things. And certainly based on discussion tonight, we will get back with the prospect and suggest or advise them about council members' concerns relative to the financing for this project and the concern for the risk. But there's a couple things I'd like to point out, okay? Number one, probably about five years ago or more, council said, council said the major push for downtown is to get unique standalone restaurants and opportunities downtown. That was a major direct, or at least it was interpreted by staff as a major direct policy thrust to do, okay? Along those lines, if you're going to be a restaurant, by and large, you can kick up at a higher caliber other than a smaller, hang on, super specialized, you have to have a certain amount of square footage in order to be able to develop that. So for example, that's one of the ongoing issues. And I believe why it hasn't opened with Oliver Perry's is discussion about, are they going to be able to make enough money on that square footage that they have? And they have some real severe questions with that. Along those lines about this direction, you also advised the DEA to become involved and be a vehicle relative to help assisting on these type of developments. And so therefore, at least in my opinion, the DEA has continued to progress on a line about expanding out more each time for each particular type of development. So for example, they were not involved with land purchasing, but then the city did back them up and they purchased a piece of property or the Commodore Building, which is the one that Councilmember Albritton is referring to. And they were able to turn around itself. Uh, city also agreed to support DEA on using all of the downtown remaining balance of the downtown development account, as was talked about, relocating, you know, the electric poles, so on and so forth. So the, the process relative to what the DEA is doing as it, for lack of a better term, matures, uh, makes sense in what needs to be done. Relative to this prospect or any other prospect, but we'll use this prospect, for example, as Robert and particularly the mayor has indicated. This prospect has been very interested in Perry for at least the last five years, if not more. And the original thought and the direction was to go and deal with the property owners in the downtown. Just normal turnaround type of process. And this prospect and probably based on its response, I think the same for any other type of prospect that has that type of square footage needing was that none of the property owners that would have that type of square footage were interested in selling or the conditions that they wanted to have were not workable for this type of project to come in to downtown. So the next option that was determined, as Robert indicated, talking with the DEA, is, is there something that the DEA can do? Now, one of the very, very important differences, I believe, with this and why it is so different than, we'll say, an Orleans-on-Carroll is the ownership of the land. Because the ownership of the land, plus whatever your financial operation, but primarily the ownership of the land is one of the prime aspects that you can go to a commercial lender in order to finance your project. In this particular case, the DEA is the owner of the property. That was done because if the city was interested in pursuing this type of project or whatever, we basically couldn't go and guarantee it because of what the city is restricted on for disposing of surplus land. In other words, just have to go out to bid and whoever could come in. And that would not achieve what the goal was of DEA and the council. The DEA has that option, but it's still public land through the authority. So they do have some more restrictions, not as many as the city does, but they have some more restrictions. So they opted to come in and in essence provide a banking type of operation as well as the land. With the total understanding that following up on one of your concerns, if there is some type of failure relative to this operation, then the land and the assets all revert back to the DEA. And the city, it would be obligated, there's no denying about that, that if there is some problem, the city would have to back up the bonds. Now, if we have to back up the bonds going back to a point, that's probably gonna come from the hotel motel tax. It's not gonna be coming from the general fund or the regular property taxpayers. So I want to emphasize that. Relative to the process and how long it's going to be, I, as a manager, envision that there's gonna be strong incentives relative to the debt service process, which will basically escalate for the prospect the longer the prospect waits to exercise that option to buy. So it's not gonna be out there that long. Our general discussions, at least my understanding, on the few meetings I've been in with the prospect is it is, number one, their intention definitely to buy it. And it's their intention to buy it in a, maybe shorter period of time, three, maybe five years. There's no guarantee, but that's what they're talking about and planning to do. And so therefore, you know, I believe that this is the next step on what the DEA and the council needs to do for us publicing up on Mr. King's point about continuing to have the downtown grow and be successful. The businesses we talk about and the interest that they have and have come in and we're very proud of having and everything are the result of a whole series of decisions and items that council has done to encourage having this type of development come in. And I think, like I said before, that this is probably the next step that has to be done. If council's not comfortable with this, that's understandable. Uh, like Robert had indicated, you know, they had talked about different options. If council believes that the prospect needs to put more money into the project or certainly provide the option for the prospect to purchase, you know, the property in this and then out, we will get back with them and let, let them know. And then come back and let you know as well. But I do believe, council members, that if you have a particular problem, I'm not saying you do, but if you have a particular problem with this prospect, okay. You know, I mean, state it, but, you know, okay. And then it won't go through. But you're going to have something like this come back to you again. And it's gonna come back to you again because that is, like Mayor referenced on some of these other cities, that's the next step. That's the next level that you're going to. And that's where I think it's very important for Perry to be in because if we're not, then we're gonna wind up slipping back. And you are going to be saying that, uh, in this particular case, how downtown develops, and it may be what you want to do, but how downtown develops will totally relate to whatever private property owners are interested in doing. And that, I don't think is necessarily where you want to wind up going.
What's the property, what is the fair market value of the lot?
I'm not, we have ordered appraisal for that. I'm not sure if we've gotten the appraisal back yet. But that was one of the first things we said had to be done.
And in a yes or no type of question, was the prospect offered the, the lot to buy? Or were they just said, here, we can do this for you? Because that's an offer too good to turn down. You know, we'll build the building for you, you put in ten percent. I mean, that'd be very difficult to say no to. But if they want it so badly, why are they not buying it and why are they not doing it? I'm just not comfortable. I don't care that it's a brewery. Listen, goodness, I'll be down there, I'll enjoy that. I don't care about that part. It's just the structure of it that is concerning to me, that, that we're putting the bill.
Right. Well, my understanding is Robert indicated was, which is fairly standard for particularly downtown government authorities, is a series of options were offered. And, and you're right, I mean, if I'm a prospect coming in, I'm gonna take what I think is the best, best option. We will certainly get back and emphasize to them, this may be your only option. You know, based on discussion and see how council's comfortable with. And they may say, okay. They may say, well, we're willing to put more money in. They may say, we're going to, uh, we don't believe it's viable for us and we're not gonna participate in.
And that might be best for the people of Perry if they not, people of Perry, they not want to go into debt for that. I'm not talking about being a brewery, I'm talking about being anything. If we have not had a square inch of our prime downtown property go empty because there weren't people out there wanting it and wanting to build a business and, and doing whatever they could and pulling money in from all different revenue streams to make it happen. So it's not like, you know, I just, I just think we are handing up the money.
I would consider the restaurants that are already here, how far, far is it? Loan this kind of money to this guy when they've had to work hard to keep what they've got? Well, this, this is gonna take business away from some of our current residents. And the fellow that just don't remodel it is. He got his money from somewhere. Didn't get it from the city of Perry, if I remember correctly.
He, he did not get it directly from the city of Perry. He got a substantial amount of public funding, you know, through the different state agencies that, that offered this opportunity. But the, and this may be what this prospect winds up doing. But as I mentioned before, the primary difference is, is that for the Muse Theater, they're able to go in owning the property. So that becomes the primary collateral, if you will, relative to the process to go forward. Relative to, you know, loss of businesses and all that type of stuff. I think probably, again, because they own the property. But one who might have a major concern would be Orleans-on-Carroll. Because that is, in my opinion, the competition level that this prospect is potentially talking about. It's not, it's not just a smaller place in a coffee shop or the bakery store and those type of things. And apparently, Orleans-on-Carroll is comfortable with it because the owner is a member of the DEA board and he voted for it.
Well, I think you might want to check some of that because he, my understanding is that he is not at all opposed to a brewery, but he is opposed to the structure. That's my understanding.
Well, if that, that could be the case, Ms. Peterson, I don't know. From my perspective, I go back and take a look at what was the vote? You know, what was discussed and then what was the vote? And my understanding is the vote from the DEA for this project and everything on at least two occasions was unanimous. But we will take a look and get back, council members, you know, with the different options and everything that you have expressed and get back and let you know what the results are.
Got one question is that, do we know where another part of the stage that DEA is connected with the city, like, like we are, they have a project like that, is there where we can find them?
There was, there was a project just like this, about four and a half million dollars, I think, over the range. And then the name of it is like a brewery restaurant. And they are doing phenomenal and they're bringing people from all over West Georgia to the range. And it was done by the DEA from the same type of arrangement, so. I mean, there's, there's, like I said, Duluth probably bonded up. Did he tell us how much they bonded up when they bought the alley there?
Part of Dallas, though, but, uh.
It's, I mean, they've got, they built, the city themselves built probably seven restaurants in that area. And they lease them out. It's owned by the DEA. It's, it's just the way business is done. It's what's happening right now throughout Georgia with your DDAs. And so if the council chooses not to do that, we'll go back and see if we can secure a way of having this. But this is truly a long-term anchor business for the downtown portion of Perry.
Robert, I would add, they're asked, do we have any, like, kind of input, maybe from Chamber in a broader sense? I realize that people, I guess, have been contacted on the negative sense. But on the other end, there might be, I don't know this one way or another, but there might be a broader consensus that feels a different way about it. Uh, and so would that be worth, I would think, getting perhaps their input on? Before we sit, before we throw it out or, or, you know, anything else. So there might be others that, you know, see this as being positive in the long run. I feel that's worth considering.
I personally could not have any discussion. Uh, the project is supposed to be confidential. But no, I, I've engaged interests generally throughout the city either way.
Well, we will put some information together and come back to you again with a, with the answer from the prospect.
And let me just real quickly, uh, they're proposing initially a pretty quick timeframe on this. We'd like, if they would like, we start in February, structure open in October, uh, certainly open before the end of the year because that's when the rules on tax credits in downtown expire. So each of this type of operation would be to be able to get in, certify on the rules on tax credits and then be able to collect those tax credits for, I think it's five years, is that right, Mr. Harden? After, after the certi, so. But yes, we will get more information, uh, via the prospect and hopefully it's up to you all.
Just my own point, how they gonna borrow the money one day and hold them in? They don't judge.
Uh, yes, sir. But let's add, uh, error here. If February twenty-two, that's kind of expected timeframe for bond closing, that's what you all.
You close the bond then.
Yes, sir. And then the money will be available since.
Construction, construction, then they go on twenty-second, they, oh, the date's twenty-second.
I'll come from February.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Yeah, we'll get back with some additional information. Item four on our agenda or Councilmember, Ms. Banbury?
Uh, there is a hole. If you're coming if you're coming to New Hope from San Juan Boulevard, we're starting on, starting on Courtney Hall, just coming all the way up to Rose Wall. If you make a left onto Rose Wall, there is a hole that is developing right down from the church on the left. And, uh, that's causing some concern, so if, if we can look at getting that fixed, it would be appreciated.
Dr. Albert?
On a merrier note, the Christmas lights look good.
On a merry or note, the Christmas lights look good. Thank you for all the work.
They did a very good job, even though we got criticized because we put them up too early.
Oh, wow.
But it takes, it takes that long to get all of them up where we have them all over town. So I was delighted to see them come on and it is a much merrier note.
Mary Briden?
I just want to report that the Christmas at the Crossroads event went very well this Sunday. And I just appreciate the opportunity to represent the city there and share a time of, of merry and winter with our city.
Glad to hear that. Glad to see that event come back. It's been two years without it and it's been around for, what, 35 years, I think is what it was though. So I'm very delighted that we were able to participate in that again this year and look forward to it next year. Sorry I had to be out of town, but I have a hand that was 100 years old, so.
She had a birthday party.
Mr. Hunt?
I'm an argumental.
I think we did enough for the night. It's good to see that we all have opinions, so that's, that's, that's a good thing about it.
Uh, well, and on that note, it's good for the, um, commission to see we really do talk out in the meetings, uh, the planning commission, that was something we talked to them about the other night. Uh, but I wanted to thank Mr. Gilmore's, uh, people for getting that information together, for the people in Stone Gate. And, um, also just to let you know that the border breaks, the water mains have resulted in two places in which the sidewalk is, uh, caved in. One, one was fixed by the homeowner, but, um, and I, they did request that I asked you to come and fix it, but I just thought it might be important to know that it's encroaching, uh, the sidewalk now there. And the street, I think, too, in places.
Council, I'm sorry. Following up on that, appreciate the homeowner replacing the sidewalk. The homeowner would have to do that. We, we will automatically do that. Now, they do not necessarily get out right after the break is occurred.
Yeah, yeah. They, I, you know, they did call it though and they just got out there.
Ms. King? Mr. Gilmore, anything else for us to see?
No, sir.
Ms. Smith?
No, sir.
Ms. Newt? I have a parpade head. Ms. King, anything for us this evening?
Yes, sir. Um, you all got a notice from, uh, Mr. Gilmore that on Thursday, um, we were awarded the number 21 in total of the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, FY 2020.
This is your 20, this is your 21st receipt of that order?
That's correct. And so we've been, I don't know, that's 14 consecutive years, because we missed a few years.
Super. Thank you for all the hard work that you guys do to make that possible. I know it's not easy. Ms. Warren? Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I do want to, I wanted to mention, um, I spoke with, um, our grant administrator today and just wanted to, for the public, we have some grant funds that are still available in the Creekwood area because of the death and some other issues there. Um, so anyone who lives on Creekwood Drive, Keenborough Bar, Winchester Circle, um, if, uh, we have funds still available for home improvements that I want to get out there, so.
Good, that's great. Chief Lynn?
Nothing denies, sir, thank you.
Chief Parker?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Johnson, just real quick reminder that the new ISO rating did go into effect December 1st. And if you haven't done so yet, you may wanna call your insurance provider and see if you may get a discount on your premium.
Thank you. Appreciate that information. Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Horton, anything else for you? Ms. Larkin?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Harden?
Nothing special, thank you.
I'm seeing several. Desmond's back there, I can see. Ms. Thomas, anything for us?
No, sir.
Is there anyone from Planning and Zoning that has, like, to address council this evening?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody that I missed? No. Take care. But I did ask her. She said no. Is there anybody else? Uh, at this time, I'm entertaining a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of real estate.
A moment, sir.
Motion's a second. I'll let the paper please in the court.